It's 6:02, I'm calling you to order approval of the agenda that may be amended. I don't see anything other than one, I would like to put citizens input, I forgot to put it in at the beginning.
Oh, thank you.
We normally have it after approval of the minutes, citizens input.
Oh geez.
And then also number 10, I would like to make other business, and then 11 adjourn.
Yes, I motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes, I only see out of like five or six here, Robert, you think, you and I were only at together at two of them.
Yeah.
The rest of them were Chris and I, so I'd like to move those to the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Citizens are doing two, okay?
Yep.
So the next up is citizens input, I guess, so, where we just made the change. So, is there anybody in the audience that has any input?
Any input from citizens for this evening? Lot of head shaking, no.
Okay, anybody online?
We've got quite a few people online, I don't see any hands raised.
So the next online is?
Financial updates.
Financial updates.
Financial updates. Treasure.
So, is Lucretia there?
Lucretia is here.
Here.
Okay, so Lucretia, as the town charger, you've been asking at some board meetings, questions about your general fund, or the town's general fund, it's not your general fund, but the general funds restricted funds and the balance total, and we had promised since May that we would get back to you, but first can you give us any update on your concerns and a financial update?
Well, the financial update, the July Treasurers report's gonna show that at the end of July, we had 4.5 million in the general fund, and as of today, not counting outstanding checks, there is 6.5 million. My biggest concern right now is the upcoming bond anticipation note, which needs to be paid a week from Wednesday.
So on August 21st, we have a note that's due for $8.4 million band note?
Right.
Plus interest?
Plus interest, yep.
Okay, okay, and Michael, you were working with, up until I guess this week, with Maskoma Bank, I think you told the board that Community Bank that we switched over to, that was supposed to get the funding to us, that they said they didn't want to do it anymore, is that correct?
Repeat that again, repeat that one more time, I'm sorry, the last part about Community Bank?
We switched our funds over to Community Bank, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so up until last week, the board was underneath the impression we were gonna get that loan from Community Bank?
The 19 million to cover the cost of the road.
No, the 8.4 million, and that's due August 21st.
So the board was under the impression we were gonna take out an 8.4 million dollar band to do what?
Okay, so you're the town manager, there's a note due for 8.4 million dollars on August 21st, how are you gonna manage that?
So right now, NIMRIT shows, and Lucretia's corrected me here, but it shows 7.4, but she's saying it's a different number.
That's our cash.
Okay, so when I was looking at NIMRIT in the second period from last year, it appeared we had about $8 million in revenue, so if we were projecting that for this year, if you had the 8 million plus taxes went up this year, plus the four or five million that our financial director, salt in reimbursements that we hope to get back this week, that will put us well over the 8.4 million that we need to pay back the band, gives us time to figure out how to finance projects moving forward.
Okay, so your intentions was to use the funds from this year, that started July 1st, to pay off last year's bond anticipation note, which is for the water line 1 through 3A, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, do you understand that we can't pay the band note with general fund money?
Well, we pay everything with general fund money.
No, general fund is where money goes into, and then it's supposed to be allocated to different places. The job of the town manager was to get these loans in place. You came on a year ago, what was your plan to replace the 8.4 million dollars, other than you're going to use general fund money from this year, this new tax bill, plus the fact that the bill from Casella, the contract is worth how much to Casella?
Five, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
$20 million, plus?
Yeah, probably around there.
One through 3A, there's a $20 million award bid that's put out to proceed, and there's more bills being due at this point that keep on coming in, so what have you done to secure the money to cover contracts 1 through 3A for the water project?
So Mary Ellen and I had a conversation with Doug Babbitt a couple weeks ago, maybe? Mary Ellen, does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay, we didn't have the numbers that we needed to present to him then, on asking how much we needed to take out for a future band, and we were gonna follow up with him. And I began that conversation, but he told me that you had already followed up with him.
So you told the board after our meeting last Friday, two Fridays ago, that Doug Babbitt said he could not do the loan anymore.
I don't recall that, I don't recall that.
Okay, well, I went to Doug Babbitt on Tuesday of last week to sit down, because you and I, Mary Ellen, and I believe Lucretia, Babbitt and Ned, sat with Doug Babbitt, I was on a phone from Dublin, and you invited me on a call, and we were told that they were gonna be our new bank, and we were switching the funds over from Maskoma Bank, because Maskoma could no longer lend any more money, because they supposedly tapped out what they could give to municipalities. So we switched our money over to Community Bank.
Correct.
And we've been underneath the impression that you've been talking to Community Bank since, I don't know, when did we open up the bank account with Maskoma?
Well, I have been, that is an accurate statement, so, and something I might be able to take some credit for, we needed interim financing to cover the road project. I had a contact in Rutland with Community Bank, and Community Bank, after working with Doug Babbitt, said, great, let's open up a partnership, we can provide that interim financing, but we want all your accounts, so we went with Community Bank. We didn't take out the 19 million dollar band, because the road project is delayed.
But Michael, there's a $20 million, this is your, you're the town manager.
Yes, sir.
There is a $20 million Casella work being done, how are you financing, before you leave on Friday, what is your plans to finance $20 million?
Since you had reached out to Doug, since you had reached out to Doug Babbitt, it felt like that you had taken over that task.
No, you told the board that you could not get a loan from Doug.
No, sir, I'm confused, this is a treasurer's report, so I don't know why I'm being asked all these questions.
Well, you're the town, no, this is financials, so we're getting into our concern, and I'm asking you a question.
Okay, I've answered it.
You've been with us for almost a year.
And have done a lot.
Where are we getting, where are we getting the $20 million to move forward with the work for Casella?
You're gonna have to get another band.
What have you been working on up until last Wednesday?
Like, in general, or?
For this, no, for this.
Well, we were gonna go with, we were gonna go, we were gonna go to Doug Babbitt with the number, I'm not sure if that number's 8.4, but we would need something to float construction costs, because, let's take a step back, the project is funded through SRF, the problem with that is you've gotta wait every month to get reimbursed for each pay app, so there's always a worry that you might not have enough in the bank to cover a $1 million or $2 million payment, so you'd want your band there just as a security measure if you can't get your reimbursement in time. So the Casella project is funded, it has a loan that's reimbursable.
How is it funded?
It's funded through SRF.
So it's funded through SRF, but we've known all along that we need to borrow money to cover the gap until we get paid from SRF, correct?
That's correct.
So I'm glad, because you had said that we wouldn't get a loan from Doug.
I don't remember, I don't remember saying that.
Okay, you've been working with Doug for how long on this loan?
Which one?
The 8.4 million plus the full band note that we would need to do Casella.
I haven't been working with him on that loan, I've been working with him on securing a band for, to cover future payments in case we needed it.
So I have an email from Doug, I have an email from Doug Babbitt on August 7th, Michael, to Abby, to myself, to Mary Ellen, Lucretia, because those three ladies have been working their butts off since August 7th. Good morning all, from Doug Babbitt. Let me start saying that we will commit ourselves to doing everything possible to meet your needs within the time constraints you have presented. With that said, yesterday, the 6th, was the first I learned that the town would need these funds on this timeline. Michael had maybe aware that there might be a need for something and some amount at some point in time, but nothing firm, so now if I can get a firm handle on what's needed, and how, and when it will get paid back, then I can pass. First, are there internal, it goes on, they've been working since last Wednesday, putting things together that you should have been doing back when we switched the accounts You wanted to be the town manager, and where, how are we getting the funds? You cannot use general funds to pay a band note, it's specifically for the water line. I'm asking you, before you leave, what was your plan, or are you just leaving August 16th, because the note is due August 21st?
I've told you my plan, and go ahead.
Yeah, so can we move on, Jim, so it sounds like we don't have it, right, so we have a problem to solve, so I think that's asked and answered about 10 times, right, so we have to move on and figure out how to solve it, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so how do we do that?
So.
How much reimbursement, how much reimbursement have you received from SRF?
No, no, how much, you're the manager, Michael.
I don't have that number on me right now, but our finance director's here.
Okay, but you're the one that's been working with the bank. Mary Ellen and Abby and Lucretia, would you like to fill in on what you three have been doing with Doug Babbitt, and what the actual needs are?
I didn't want to take the floor here on what next steps are, so you have the 8.4, it sounds like, and then we have a mitigation of expense control, right, from a Casella perspective, that's what it sounds like, right, so you need to fill a short-term payment gap until you get reimbursed, and you also have an 8.4, that's the summary that I just heard, right?
Right, we've talked to Doug Babbitt, we talked to Doug Babbitt today, and we've decided that we're gonna focus on the 8.4 right now, because that is a immediate need. We spoke to, when we spoke to him, he let us know that he believed that we can get this done, he just had some more questions, and we have been giving him the answers, and so I believe that we're gonna be able to fix that problem. As far as SRF, we've received to date 651,000, we've received a million from a community grant, it's called CRRP, we, another portion of the SRS, SRF loans have opened up, so we've applied for 4.164 million, and we have heard that we are supposed to receive that this week, the week of August 12th.
And do we anticipate that will outpace, I don't, you know, I don't know exactly how this works, will that outpace Casella invoicing?
No, because these are all, it's reimbursements of payments made.
Of work already paid, okay, perfect, okay.
Yes, and we have, yes, and we have about, we have about 13, or, I'm sorry, 1.3 million in August payments that we are, that we're going to ask for reimbursement.
This is where I switch over to approach professional opinion, would your opinion then be that you would want to have a separate note that you would take out to pay Casella timely, out of a separate area instead of general funds, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then that would be then the pursuit as a result of this conversation, right?
Yes.
Want to do something separate like that, so you're always paying current, get paid back, not at, not at general fund.
Yes.
Okay, all right, someone please let me know when I'm being dangerous, all right?
You're getting there.
Yeah.
But it's impressive, so, but the four to five million that we just saw reimbursement for, the 600,000 and some odd, and the 1 million from CRRP, that was all reimbursed and allocated into the general fund, correct?
It was reimbursed, and, no, it was revenue of the, of each particular program.
Yeah, but it went back into the general fund.
It all goes into the general fund.
That's right, and that's the point I'm trying to make.
Well, it, it's one bank, everything's in there, but it's different funds.
One bucket of money that actually has.
That has funds.
And the allocation, right, different.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, understood. So should we move back to the treasurer's report?
Well, I'm, I've given you what I know.
Financial question that Lucretia has been asking since May, because I think Lucretia has more concerns, think we're gonna end up taking money from the general fund, because no one's been going for a loan to cover, I mean, we're gonna have a few more million dollars between now and December, okay?
Yep.
So the question is, Rob, you're right on, the question is, what was the plan to cover all of this, because Lucretia's gonna have the same issue coming up in another two months, probably. So we have an 8.4 million dollar note due, is what the finance director is telling you, and she's telling you it's gonna be paid down by Hallie and Mary Ellen by August 21st?
We will be receiving, we should be receiving 4.16 this week, or next week at the latest, and then we have other reimbursements. The amount that we've been reimbursed, we've received and applied for at this time is 7.2 million, so we are trying to get this, but of course, it all, it all works on the timeline of the state.
Yeah, understood, so this goes for the broader stretch, right, so we talked about this, like one of the things that we paid out from general fund without having a strategic plan around a band that would pay for it to get reimbursed, so that.
That's right.
It's a round and round conversation, do we have something like that, or does Mary Ellen have something?
I think I put together like a back of the envelope, I showed you guys an Excel sheet of what totals were to date, so where there were shortfalls.
Yep.
And I shared that with Mary Ellen and Abby.
Okay, good.
So I imagine they might be cleaning that up in the future.
So this was, once again, just someone keep me in the guardrails here if I go too far off, but the concept, as I understand it from last year, is we paid money out, right, and we were paying cash out, and from a strategic approach, probably not what we should have done, right, we probably should have looked to some band that would have then been able to pay it, so we can pay that back and not be worrying about the situation we're in around this restricted funds piece, right, because if we had a loan, we would be able to pay these things off, we would have a loan that we would be paying, and not pulling from an area that we shouldn't be pulling from.
We did have an 8.4 million dollar band, although it was not drawn on the way it probably should have been.
Okay.
I believe at first, a previous town manager was using general funds to pay for expenses from the TIF, when it really should have been paid.
Should have been the other way.
Yes, because then you can, you can control it, you see it, it's, it's there, so, and probably, and most likely, it should have been, it should have been more.
Okay.
Because we should have, they should have looked at what we were going to need and planned ahead.
I think I'm, I think I'm on the same page, I understand I'm connecting all the dots, my question kept, keeps being, how do you fix it? So, didn't do that, okay, we should have, how do we, can we some way go back to making sure the money gets to the band, band pays general fund, but we know that, I don't know if you're following my logic here, you know what I mean, so how do you get it to a point where you reallocate those funds, so that it looks like it's a band payment instead of something that's out of cash?
We need to go for financing.
Yeah, go financing, okay. Do you have all that information, so based on, because I had a couple side conversations with Michael around, and things keep popping up in these discussions, the East Mountain Road, there was, there were several things that had line items that, you know, should have been out of a band payment, probably, right?
Those, yes, we have about 2.4 million in flood recovery repairs that had to be done. We are working with, actually Abby's working with FEMA, but FEMA's very slow.
And so that's like a separate issue from the 8.4 million dollar band. Those funds, the flood recovery, was paid from general fund dollars.
Yeah, and some of it we're not getting back.
Some of it we won't get back, but we could take a band out for those.
Okay, so, this is where I'll get into my business background, whose job is this?
Order, order.
Yeah, so someone looks at all this, so let's say I was working in the town, and this was my job, I would look at it all, and I would say, I have to solve this, who's, who's that person that would look at this and would go, okay, money allocated, maybe shouldn't have been, money came, I did all this FEMA work, but money didn't come back from FEMA, so, hey, but I took it out of cash, maybe it should have been a band, so now I have to go back and look at it all collectively and go, okay, how do I put the pieces back where the pieces should be?
Where they should be?
Yeah.
Well, it's a collective.
It's a collective, okay, so.
So I think it starts with paying back the general fund what it's owed, number one, getting, paying the band off, the 8.4, then paying the general funds back, getting the financing, and going forward with financing that is going to cover these expenses, no longer going to the general fund, because November 30th is gonna roll around very quickly, and we will find out from the state what we have to pay them in education dollars.
Sure.
I would imagine that it's going to be somewhere in the vicinity of maybe 9, 10 million in November.
Yeah, so, understood, and I might have to do an aside on this, because I always look at the way a person, so I look to accountable parties, and I would say, so who would, so you would then have your opinion that this is what should happen, right, but then that would take other people to have to do some pieces of it, right, and then you're not responsible to having those people do those pieces, you know what I mean, Lucretia? So you have to have a person that you would say, okay, who takes, and that would be a town manager then at the end of the day, you would expect, right?
Is, yeah, responsible for coordinating that.
Yeah, coordinating and making sure those pieces fall into place, and that strategy is embarked upon, okay. Okay, so as of right now, based on all that discussion, we can pay our bills, right?
Yes.
Yeah, right, but we still have.
We still have about 1.1 left on the band, after reimbursements that we have received and applied for, although we will be getting more as the, as, you know, the Casella apps come in, because we, we do have the SRF fund that is open up to allow us to do that, because we actually had Casella apps that were from September, October, November of last year, but until the, until the loan went through the process and was approved by the bond bank, which was just in June, at the end of June, we couldn't access that.
Okay, okay. Still problem solved, short-term we're okay, would you say that's?
I would say, short-term, we're gonna be fine, because we are working with Community Bank.
Okay, okay, good.
Whew. Good one.
All right, that was a good one, yeah, so we got through that, but how do we, this is probably for the next person, would you say this would be top of list for your placement? To then look at this from a financial planning perspective on a go-forward, as far as where we draw funds?
Yeah, I've sent you guys, I sent the select board a priority list of tasks that I figured would need to be, be taken care of in the next month, two months, along with all my passwords, but I do agree, I agree with Mary Ellen here, that short-term, okay, but definitely the conversation needs to continue with Community Bank.
Yeah, okay.
And then, and then also Abby's right, you know, the flood stuff's important to take care of, if it seems that we're not gonna get reimbursed in a timely manner, is there an option to do a general obligation bond instead of a band, because getting a band without a general obligation bond, not an ideal situation.
And then I would want to have, this is my, for my own well-being, that's why I'd want to have a conversation outside of that, to understand how we handle financial elements, because I don't know that, you know, would Abby then decide to make a decision on what type of funding for that specific element, or would, yeah, you'd have to go to Mary Ellen, right?
I would assume that would be the town manager, I mean, maybe Mary Ellen would be involved, like what specific finance?
Very good, thank you very much, okay, I'm good.
But ultimately, a town manager.
Yeah, okay, so what's next on the agenda?
Public Works Director, financial update.
So I have an update on the flood recovery expenses, and I had talked to you all, I think it was back in June, where we just kind of put a pause on, on spending.
Yes.
In general, till we got kind of a better handle. We've spent, call it 2.88 million so far on the flood recovery, I've submitted 1.6, oh, sorry, 1.17 million to FEMA in reimbursements.
Okay.
By category, so that's category A and category D, we've received 730,000 so far, with 435 still outstanding, the remaining 1.17, can, FEMA's got some issues they need to resolve from the prior team, and once those issues are resolved, we can start submitting our CATC work.
Okay.
Which, we have 1.17 million right now, that we're carrying on our general fund bucks, mostly that is East Mountain Road work that was completed, and some of the other smaller roads. Mostly that is East Mountain Road work that was completed and some of the other smaller roads. So right now, total that we're carrying on our books, 2.146 million. And it's an estimated additional 4.9 million in repairs that we need to make around town. And 20% of that is estimated to be the town share, just rough conservative estimate, 1.5 million. But we won't know until we're submitting the CATCs, we won't be able to narrow that in.
Okay.
Narrow down that a little bit more.
I guess my first comment on that would be, we looked at all, this is all the same things we looked at collectively the last time. Is that true? When we went through this larger list, this is everything that we looked through that you had actually very nicely documented, right? And gone, you know, piece by piece.
Yep, the projects remaining.
Yep, and then you had actually said, here's what we think we're gonna be reimbursed for, here's what we're not, here's what we're out of pocket, and here's how we're going to approach this by actually stopping.
Right, for now, until we know, until FEMA resolves some things. But also, we need money in order to-
Okay. Yeah, so if there is a, I think that is how we should look at then the next portion. I would like your opinion then on what, you know, what we should do from a prioritization perspective and then what that would cost, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're moving forward right now with what we, with East Mountain Road, 19B, Trailside, number one, number two, depending on who you ask. Culverts, those were the ones that you all opened bids for, I think it was last week, for about a half million dollars to do those two. It would be great to get up into Little Sherburne and stabilize that area a little better before the fall. And then I think the rest of the work is gonna have to wait until spring.
Okay.
A lot of it's, you know, big culverts, large jobs. And some additional work on East Mountain Road. There's also the paving for about 330,000 coming.
These are all the same projects?
Different projects, seeing all flood recovery.
All flood recovery, but all the same projects that were documented, right? That we talked through. Anything different here from the last time that we talked about? Okay. Then let's wait till we all reconvene, let's make sure Jim and Chris are here, and let's just sit and talk through, because I'd wanna have this yes, yes, no type of thing. Just make sure we decide exactly what we're going to do and we know specifically what the path forward is and the expense and so forth, right now we're gonna pay for it. So is there anything else in your update? Okay, excellent.
I have a question for Abby.
Question from Jim.
I have a, Abby, you worked for another town when you went through Irene. Specifically when the town has a flood disaster like this, most towns would borrow funds waiting on the money coming in from FEMA.
Yes.
And as we know in Killington, sometimes FEMA can take four or five years to pay us everything back.
Yep.
Is there any programs out there that allows us to borrow funds?
So there is, we had gotten notice in June that with last summer's disaster, FEMA may actually, will actually, it says that they will reimburse us for interest expense if we borrow money to cover the costs. They'll look at each project individually and allocate how much interest they would reimburse for that project. But that was not available when I was working for another town, when Irene had.
This is the same problem I just mentioned earlier. This was the whole idea, we paid this money out, right? Right, out of the general fund, we didn't pay it out of a line of credit or a band, right? Okay. Just wanna make sure I understood that and said that out loud. All right, any other questions, Jim?
Can you run through what work still do to be done up in this area? What we should be borrowing for, when we do have another person in place?
I think I would like to take some time to pull that together a little better and go through it in greater detail rather than just off the top of my head.
Okay.
But more immediately are the two projects that the board opened bids for, which is paving of East Mountain Road and the two culverts.
I would do the same, just like when we walked Thundering Brook, it's like a yes, no type of thing. Yeah, we will, we won't, right? But when we go through, at least we know what we're up against and then we know the expense and then ultimately the strategy for securing the funds. All right, okay, great.
And we are carrying a ban still with Mascoma. And Mascoma is still very interested in our partnership. So I spoke to Mascoma and if we did need, if Community Bank couldn't offer it to us, then Mascoma said, you know, they wouldn't hesitate to provide us funding for flood repair.
Yeah, and the only thing we have to worry about there is there was some agreement with Community Bank, I heard. Couple minutes, was there something where they wanted all our accounts or something like that?
We did move all of our accounts.
We did that, okay, good, okay, perfect. All right, good?
So we are-
Oh, no, not good.
No, I'm pulling up West Hill Road. Michael, you've been talking to Lou at Mascoma Bank?
Bill Dunn.
Okay, and you sent an email to Abby, Mary Ellen, and myself, I believe, and maybe LaCrecia, saying I'm gonna hand this over to Jim or one of you folks. You wrote an email to Bill saying, hey, I'm leaving on the 16th?
Well, that's only, that is because I called Doug Babbitt because I knew that we had to start actually having a real conversation about taking out a ban. And when I spoke to Doug, Doug said that you had already set up a meeting with him, Mary Ellen, and Abby, giving me an impression when I went down to the basement and said, Doug's, you are in contact with Doug now, and you said yes. That felt to me like a handover of the ball.
No, I went to Doug, like I said before, went to Doug just to say that-
That's not what he told me.
When I was in Dublin, okay, Michael was setting up a conversation with you, Mary Ellen, myself, and LaCrecia, along with you, we're on the phone with Doug. And then basically, we're handing it over, all the accounts to Doug, to do orally, because we knew we had a room that had to come in. And once again, the only reason why I spoke to Doug was because he had said that you could not do it. And you said you were gonna go to Mascoma, you had gone to Mascoma Friday morning last week. And it just seems funny that you handed this off to me or to anyone on the team and you basically, I mean, it's the same thing, Mike. We didn't talk to, I told your Public Works Director and told your Tennis Director that he's never heard anything from you. I'm walking in the door now.
All right, great, Jim. And then we can move on to the next topic.
I hope.
Yeah.
Well, the issue that I really have is because I'm reading in the newspaper stuff like, you know, relationships have been broken and a whole bunch of other stuff. I mean, your job-
If we can actually say noted, we move on. Yeah, that'd be great, I just don't want to beat the crap out of it.
I don't want the town to be beat the crap out of.
Understood, neither do I. I think noted.
But our job is to oversee.
Oh, understood, and it's been, we hashed a couple of times during this meeting, so I would say that we could all say noted on that.
Town manager's presentation of the employee policy update.
So Mary Ellen's thing was covered in the thing before, I guess?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great.
So can you start off with how we're at this employee policy update?
So you put this on the agenda, what was the idea here that I would get? So we have a running policy that staff and I have been working on. It will, you know, to present you guys with a full, comprehensive draft, you know, won't happen today because I'm leaving and we didn't get to finish it as a team. But we did make a good bit of progress, even up to the point where I know the town needs some kind of guidance on accessing the share drive remotely. So it's not completed yet, but I would advise, you know, since this is a busy select board, we've got a lot going on in town. You know, if you've got a replacement that wants to pick it up, I think that would be kinda difficult for them to understand what the needs of the town is and each individual department. But again, I'd advise creating an ad hoc committee to finish the policy because they've got a really good platform to work off of now.
I'm questioning, because we've got a lot of town employees here, what started the conversation of what's wrong with the old policy?
I think the old policy is just kind of a boilerplate policy that BLCT farmed out with minor changes that doesn't necessarily meet the needs of the organization and in and of itself doesn't really describe its purpose very well.
Is there anyone in the audience that's a town employee that can, what is your, why are you all here? And what is the concern of the existing policy and now switching to a new policy?
Understanding what changes are being made, but particularly with regard to vacation and sick leave time.
Okay, because I'm just hearing that it's something to do with the VPN or something like that? Or I'm not sure what you just said. You said that to change for certain things. And I'm asking, because all I've been hearing since November of last year, even as a select board member, just having phone calls coming to me, is that there's something in the policy that there seems to be a disagreement or something?
As soon as I arrived here at the town, I was told that there are discrepancies with the existing policy. That there were changes that were not made in a transparent way so that staff understood.
Between the policy and what was actually actively happening?
Implemented.
Implemented, okay, okay, fine. So what is this action item then?
Well, Michael sent us an email, if you don't recall, saying that this is his last meeting.
Yep.
You wanna pull that email up that you sent the board?
This is the agreement on the vacation stuff, is the portion of the policy?
Yeah, that is something that needs to be handled.
Okay.
People still trying to get admitted into the meeting.
And I had two things on that. I had audit, just making sure that was, that's what we talked about the last time, right? Making sure, because there were some things on there that showed people just hadn't even taken any.
Uh huh.
Right?
Yeah.
So that was number one.
I'm asking for the email that was to this.
The full email?
There was a short email that you sent to the board.
Oh, there was a-
Turnover items, I'm looking for it.
I have a longer email here that says, "Good morning, I'll have one more select board meeting on Monday."
Can you put that up?
Some of it down below, I'm not sure if you guys want me to or not.
It's an email. Well, no, you can just put the top part, read off the top part then.
Yeah.
"I'll have one more select board meeting on Monday. And I strongly recommend that the leave restart plan be approved, disapproved, or edited by the select board before I leave so that staff knows what's happening. I've added a new rule that allows people to start drawing down on what I call awarded time, which I know we don't love the title, once they reach 40 hours of actual carryover. This will allow employees to carry over a week after the 2028 deadline."
Okay.
"In an effort to practice good communication, I believe Jim's taking lead on some action items." I think I was referring to the Community Bank thing there. I suggest that for the upcoming board meeting on Monday, he go ahead and put together an agenda with Linda so that there is no confusion on who is doing that. My goal for the current out is just to work on turnover items and help when needed at the request of the full board."
Okay, so here's the hours, that says remaining hours, base accrual, actual cover, carryover, awarded time, and corrected amount. And this is different than what the policy reads, correct?
Correct. If I understand that correctly, we're unwinding this to get back to policy.
What created this, you're correct. Unwind it to get back to-
Get back to policy.
Yeah, because we were not awarding time on July 1st. Instead, we were doing it on anniversary dates.
But also, the policy states a carryover that I think the staff is concerned about.
Forty hours.
So it states since 2018 or 2019 in the policy that staff is supposed to carry over only 40 hours from the previous total years. And so I just don't understand, like when you sent that email out saying, well, Jim will take it from here, how we're just gonna come in with this without touching the policy. But you also presented us, you put the time there, but in that same email, go to the left. You have a policy.
Personnel policy draft. So the intent of that was just to leave you guys with where the draft is now, because staff has put in a good amount of work on helping me build a, what, we were probably two or three meetings on having a very good, comprehensive draft to you with everybody's input on their needs of their departments.
Did you go to counsel at all for any of your writings and your policy?
No, not yet, no, not yet. But I would have, for sure.
But we started this back in November?
Well, it's more complicated than that, I think. I presented you all with a policy back then, but the idea that-
The first policy we got was-
Wasn't in November, you're right.
I mean, you know, I was given an email along with two other board members with the policy changes that you would like to make, okay?
That the next town manager needs to pick up.
There's a red line in there. No, your email says that we should either agree with you, disagree, or make changes to it.
For the leave restart plan.
You know, but this goes back to the policy. The leaves, this leave thing is part of the policy that I think most of these people are here for.
I think there's confusion here.
Yeah.
All right, so we haven't adopted a new policy.
Okay.
Okay, we're still working under the existing policy.
Okay.
All right. In order to do that, in order to actually do that accurately, we have to figure out how people are gonna be able to keep their time because we're resetting everything back to July 1st.
Okay.
So that there's no confusion, it looks like, I don't want to give the impression to town, I'm granting staff some big thing and then jumping ship. The best option here is for the board to approve this awarded time so that Mona can enter it into-
So that's the next step, you would wanna have this approved and then awarded time is something that's out there and then you get it back to, you get it back to what the policy states? Because that's ultimately the goal, so this is-
That is.
This happened, does everyone understand that, by the way? That this happened outside of policy? That, so you were seeing awarded time, right, and carryover that shouldn't have been there?
Can I say something, please?
Yeah.
Everyone was only allowed to carry over one week, so 40 hours. That's all anyone was able to carry over. Everyone's anniversary date was a different time.
Yep.
Mine, for an example, was January. By December, I probably would have used all my time. But right now, you're saying you're cutting me off 147 hours if we go with the way it is.
If we just go with the green and not-
That's correct.
Yeah, so-
Some people that started in January have used-
Good point.
Lots of time.
Yeah, so I'm-
So if I had used all my time-
I'm way too familiar with- I'm way too familiar with this, with my background, just so you know.
So that's what I'm saying.
I know so much about these policies. So, sorry. Was it working the way it should have worked? So on the anniversary date, was it stopping at 40? Were you not carrying anything over?
We were only carrying over 40 hours.
Okay, so nothing was accruing over the 40?
No, the only difficult thing with the anniversary date is I needed to keep track of everyone's date and put it in individually. So Michael had said in the beginning?
It is horrible to do anniversary.
When he first came, maybe we should go to?
Yes.
You know, the fiscal year, which makes sense.
Much more streamlined from an administrative perspective.
Right.
Yeah, agreed. Then you just have to find a way to unwind it most effectively. This is the way that that had been done to unwind it effectively? So did you give input into how to do this? No? Do you know how to do this? Like, would you have a suggestion?
I suggest we don't do the green because people are losing time. And it's, if, as I said, if I had started, say, August, I could have used all my time by July.
Did you put time into thinking about what it would mean to be off the anniversary? Yeah, so you thought about that and how to put the right amount of time into people's pockets?
So my, like, I've been working with Mona here. So everybody, if we're going to, if we're going to reset the policy, I mean, if we're going to reset to match the policy, on July 1st wit gets awarded, or July 1st, 2024, wit gets allocated 240 hours.
Okay.
Okay? But, but there's this 200 hours that we are, in essence, he could have used if he had known about this, which other people did, were able to take advantage of. So it could have gone two ways. We could have warned people three months ahead and they could have used it all, or we can do it retroactively like we're doing now and award it to them.
So is the awarded time for their anniversary or for July 1?
Actual carryover is, is what's awarded, what will be awarded every year.
On July 1?
On July 1. This awarded time carryover?
Oh, it's going to hurt my head.
Well, yeah, it's not easy.
Yeah, the way to do it is by the individual, I think, where you do a prorated award from their anniversary to July 1.
Exactly.
Yeah. You follow that?
Mm-hmm.
So it sucks for the final year. Now, I understand. I thought people were carrying over weeks and weeks and weeks for years.
That's the way it was told to Chris and I back in early January.
Everyone follow my?
Yep.
This is, yeah, you understand that?
No, I agree. And I don't think this is the year to reset it. You reset it next July 1 and?
You're going to have another, not an exciting year.
Another year, no, but seriously.
But do you understand what I just said?
Would you say that again, please?
Yeah, sure. So let's say my anniversary is in November, right? You would have to do a prorated amount that's allotted to that person in November through July, right? So you wouldn't give them the full year, you'd give them a prorated amount from November?
To their anniversary day?
To July. From their anniversary to July, and then July, everything can be new.
And then start your accrual system.
Yes, then you start the new system, yes.
Would you be starting that this past July so people that have already used most of their vacation have already?
Yeah, you'd have to do something else, which I think would hurt my brain even more if I tried to figure that one out.
It's really quite, the whole thing is really quite simple. This thing right here is just so confusing that nobody can understand it.
It's timing.
When I started?
It's timing, yeah, it's when you do it, because if you, right now, you do it by the individual, you have to unwind it by the individual. You can't unwind it all at once. Can you follow that? Right, yeah, so, because everyone is unique and they're, where they pick up the time. So you have to unwind them individually until you can get, set a point, right? Everyone with that?
Yeah.
This is very dangerous because this was my career like 25 years ago when I set up these policies. But I think that's the way to do it. Hopefully that makes sense.
So you start unwinding up to the next July 1?
Yeah, exactly. So you start, like, within that year, you go, oh, it just so happens my anniversary is in July. Okay, good, I can be unwound this year.
So instead of using somebody else's name, let's just go July number 24.
July number 24.
Pick on me.
Jim, there you go, yes.
Okay, let's pick on me instead of taking?
So what's your anniversary, Jim?
January.
So in January of this coming year?
And I'm only one year, six months.
What do you get allotted? What is your vacation thing?
It says that you get 80 hours.
You get 80.
This is at the bottom, this is, this is below vacation per month. And one to three years is 80 hours. And then it says hours per month, so each month from January to July should be getting 6.67 for those six months.
You would basically get, yeah, it's your reset that changes, so your accruals keeps happening monthly, but you, in January, you reset and you only get the six months that you would be working through before you reset again.
Six times 6.67 is already earned.
Yep.
Plus, let's say there was 16 hours in the first line, okay, that was not used from the first year.
Yep.
Okay, so 6.67 times 6.
Yep, you can?
Plus those 16.
You can carry that.
And then once we hit this year's July?
Then you can carry up to a week and you can start?
Then there's another 80 hours on.
Yep.
Okay.
And you can carry up to a week over. And that's when everyone resets at the same time.
The concern of everybody here is that, how did they get through that first year of, like, since Mona's threw a name out there, let's go on to her. Sorry, Mona.
Okay.
But it says corrected amount should be 387 hours in the gray on the far right. So if you're following the policy, like, and her anniversary date is July?
No, it's actually July.
Well, it says start date, July.
That's when I started prep time, it's January of the following year.
Well, you should take him on it because you're going to get another 200 hours. But that's how this policy would work, right? It would really, if you did it this way, it would benefit someone that started this.
I don't know if it works that way, because?
It doesn't work. This doesn't work. Now that I understand it, this, yeah, you get me right.
Because January, for a 12-plus, a 12-plus year employee, right? Now, she's 10, no, she's 20. So 16.67 hours from January to July, okay, would be the count, plus then her new award of 200.
I've done a prorated sheet and you want to talk about something that looks complicated?
It is complicated.
That is complicated. And then, and then explaining it to people.
By the way, you can't actually do that by the month, you have to do that accrual by the week. Because there's 12 months is 48 weeks, you're missing four weeks. You have to do the accrual by the week.
I will say it like this, does everyone understand the concept? So I know we're diving real deep into solving the problem, you understand the concept? Does the concept make sense as far as how this would unwind? And then you would have to just do the math behind it to make it work per person, is basically how, that's how you wind it.
You have to go through each and every person.
You have to go through each person on anniversary day, yeah.
Right, to get them to July.
You're hired.
So I would, I would say that Rob?
I can show you my old salary.
I would say that you should work with whoever's on board is doing this and figure it out. So listen, this is just another, like, with Rob sitting here, and when we had to hire on, not hire on, but choose, Chris and I, another person for the third Select Board person, and I know Chris and I took some heat for who is this new guy and, you know, everything else or whatever, but Rob worked for ADP for I don't know how long. This is what he does and he has done shutting down some locations and everything else. He has a huge background, but nobody knows it because he's kind of a quiet guy. And why didn't somebody explain that to everybody before? You said, "We're going to take Rob."
The soul knows, in that, I'm very impressed by you tonight, just in general, you're doing a great job.
You know, but, but we did say because of his experiences, but, you know, we don't have to get into the exact whatever, but Rob Heckerman here might? Relieve some people being crucial on you guys if you did kind of explain things that sometimes a little better than you do. Well, do you explain everything to the best all the time, too?
That's not my issue.
I'm not installing Select Board members. I'm just saying, if you guys would just take a few minutes to tell people what his background was before you said, "We're going to put him on board," then some people might not have a critical opinion of that.
Wait, yeah.
They might understand it better. I understand what you're saying, when they did, each candidate spoke of their background, Rob did give his background, okay? The board had better knowledge, but let's not go there. Where we're going right now is that there's a policy that's in place that doesn't fit that screen, okay? That was up. And for a while, I think a lot of the town office people have been not knowing what's going on and waiting to hear what's going to go on. Is that a fair say statement?
Yeah, and how we're doing it, so it's perfect.
Yeah, and there's also the concern? That makes sense to everyone, and we can still fix that, so we still have time to be able to do that for this year.
Yeah.
And I don't know if this kind of like is going to mess your mind up any, but I did, before I created that, so that Excel spreadsheet that you all saw was a second rendition of something that was a bit simpler. This is an Excel spreadsheet that I made of prorated months, so if you were to do some type of prorated amount, it even has these like date if, fancy date if equations in it.
Sure, everyone goes back to where they were, they go up to their anniversary date, they carry over the 40, and they're prorated up until July 1, and then they can bring the 40 over again, right? You just have to, each person needs to get that calculation done. All right? And then it'll go back to a collective reset, which will be perfect, right?
I'll send that up. Mary Ellen has a copy, that was quite a while ago, I sent that to her, but I can send it to her again and hopefully it can get?
That's all right, I can, I can do it based on Rob's explanation.
Yeah, that's probably good.
Emily, you have a question?
He knows what he's doing.
Well, I was just going to say, I am in favor of moving to the July 1, like, holding firm to the policy. I've been to Mona's desk bi-monthly, asking when my vacation days expire versus my holidays versus my sick days, when do I get this, when do I do that? So I'm in favor of moving to the July 1. I think it would make sense to get it all at once, but we need time to implement it and being told what's going to happen. Being told at the beginning of June, when I had already gotten three weeks for the year, when camp was starting in two, that I need to use two of those weeks, like, isn't doable.
So?
When I had planned to use those two weeks after camp ended. So I think our biggest frustration is the lack of unknowing. I don't think anyone's against moving to July 1, but we need clarity and structure and how it's going to be implemented to feel confident that we're not being shorted.
And based on the conversation we just had, you feel good now, right?
I?
Do you understand?
I mean?
Yeah, you'll have that same amount of time to be able to use your time, is basically what we just said.
And like, me and Mona being in January?
And then you'll have a strategy to unwind it for next July.
Yeah, like, me and Mona started in January, just prorating that January to get us until July 1.
Yep.
So we're not going 19 months?
For sure.
On 12 months of vacation.
Yep.
Yeah.
So the other term that I think I just heard you say that, July 1, we get, let's say it's 80 hours, I think it's, you're rewarded 80 hours, just like I am, I'm here a year and a half, I would get awarded 80 hours, but I can't take July 1?
Depends on the policy, yeah. It depends, so what some companies, I don't know what the policy is, but some companies would let you do it, like, they'd let you take the time even though you haven't accrued it. But you, so you're accruing it and earning it, don't let you go into?
But yet, this sheet that we had, had what you would earn per month, which I think Chris said you had to go.
Yeah, it depends, I don't know what the township does. Does the township, so, make you wait? No?
You were given your whole allotment.
Yeah, and then you catch up to it and then, so, like, because it, if you, you know, so you start work, it starts your year and you used all your vacation and you wanted to take a week off in July and you reset in July, then the company will let you do it, but you have to earn back up to it, basically, is what happens.
Right, right.
So, and in the, in the instance that someone would leave, they would claw it back.
So then, so then when you sent out the email the other day and putting this in, but then you attached your first, I'm calling the first look at the policy, okay? But you, in your email says that we should either approve it and making it sound like your last meeting, you said approve it, not approve it, or look into it further.
It's this, right?
Looks like you're doing it.
Yeah.
Well, no, because, I'm talking, no, you attached the policy to the email.
Yeah, but I've clarified that, like, quite a few times.
Because it's kind of confusing when you go to the policy, and now we think we have everything straightened out with vacation time, but it seems that in this policy, you're suggesting we move to a PTO, where now also there's 40 hours of sick time that's included into, there's no sick time, it's just personal time off of vacation. So this is why, where I'm coming from, you threw it to us in an email, I put it on the agenda and I'm trying to understand, you've been working on this since November, what is the PTO? And then all of a sudden, we throw, I know what PTO is, but like, you're giving this chart, but then if we would approve, you said, prove it or disagree, okay?
Or edit it.
Or edit it. I'm trying to get out then, did you work, I guess you're getting rid of sick time and you're putting it into vacation and sick. Was that the theory in the, in the policy?
If you guys, if the Select Board adopts a new policy with PTO, then there will have to be a strategy on how to figure, re-figure the time.
Separate, though, of this discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. I would put the whole policy thing to the side.
Yeah, okay. So I would like to throw the policy aside.
That helps, though. That helps, right? That's bounced around for a while.
Does anybody else?
I'm excited that we figured that out.
The town employees?
Me, too.
Yeah, I didn't understand until today. That's actually, that's actually good. It's actually good that we understand.
I like the work.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions?
So can we get a clear understanding, are we not following the current policy by awarding our vacation time on our anniversary date as opposed to the July 1 that's currently written in the town policy?
Let's use you as an example, what's your anniversary date?
Um, January.
You have, and you have a certain amount of time allotted to you right now, right?
Yeah, that I got.
That will all stay with you?
Yeah.
Until January.
Okay, and then next January, I can plan on getting my next?
No, then January to July?
Then January, July, you'll have a certain allotment, it'll be?
40.
It'll be 40 hours.
Okay.
So we can get you on track for a reset in July, when you get your full 80 allotment and you can carry over 40.
Because hers is an easy one, because she's an 80 hour. So a half a year would be 40 hours.
Yeah, so we're?
It's just a way to get everyone on the same page.
We're resetting July 1.
So you, your vacation is your vacation, you still use it the way you would use it up to your, up to your anniversary date, and then you, and then we get everyone in line, okay?
But, but should she want to carry, carry over a week, is she still able?
She still is, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's my, was my question.
She's going to be able to carry over the 40 from January to July.
Because I'm sorry, what did you say, Jim?
So she has an allotment already from January that expires in January?
Correct.
Of 2025. I don't, how many hours, whatever?
120.
120, okay? So it's 120 hours there, and if you haven't used any of that, okay, it's good till January of 2025. And then January 2025 to July 1 of 2025, you will get 80 hours, but you can only carry over 40 of that 120 plus? but you can only carry over forty of that one twenty plus forty. One, you have one twenty now, and then you're gonna gain, say, forty hours from January to July. So you'll have one sixty.
Yeah.
If you don't take any vacation.
By July first, I need to get my dollar forty.
By July first, you can only carry over forty hours.
And then I'll get an additional eighty, July first.
And you'll have a hundred and twenty.
And it's right on that schedule.
And then the next final year in July one, you can carry forty.
So I'm really making out January to July.
I mean, the, the issue, the issue that I see with.
It's just a little, yeah, it's just a widow.
The issue that I see with this is, like, it's gonna be individual and individual, and we're gonna have to go into an executive session anyway to discuss this or whatever, but when we look at, and there's like four hundred hours for someone from now to, and they can only, so now you're telling them by July of twenty twenty-five, you can only bring forty hours over.
That whole thing will look different, right? That whole chart, there'll be no four hundreds anymore, that all goes away, cause the people don't get allotted it, because their anniversary didn't happen, so it's all unwinding, person by person.
So if you have four hundred now, going to.
You won't.
July, no. Hold up.
That was, um, that was the solution that we just agreed is not the right solution.
So you have how many hours right now, Mona?
Hundred and forty-seven or something.
Hundred and forty-seven.
That I need to use by December thirty-first.
By December thirty-first.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, at that point, if she can carry over forty, she has those forty.
So there's a hundred, a hundred and seven. And then from January to July, you're gonna get whatever your allotment is per week or month, Jay. I mean, it's, you know, it's a week per month, a week or month, whatever way they decide to break it out. You go from there.
So is this happening, since I work on the payroll, is this happening starting July first? I mean, I didn't have any July employees I need to deal with, but I have August employees.
Yeah, so, I don't know if we need to do anything formal with this, but I would say we take it forward just in the, the way we discussed it.
Okay.
Yeah, and you can unwind it, because we're early enough in the year, right?
So now.
Person by person.
Each July one, when I did work in an office that every year I would get, and Mary Ellen, you've spoken about this, where when you come up to your new year of coming up to July, you should be getting a sheet as an employee, since we're rolling it out individually, that so-and-so, you have forty hours carry, you still have twenty hours left over, so you're getting your twenty, your allotment for this next July one.
Yep.
Then you're gonna get your sick time if we don't go to PTO.
Yep.
Your holidays, then you'll go to what your benefits are, and everyone should be given its open enrollment, and every year you should be getting that.
Depends on what the.
We used to get that.
We used to get that with previous town managers.
Would you call it a total cop statement or something like that?
Yeah, would have all the.
Thank you for your service, you did a wonderful job.
Don't forget, it's, don't forget, it's not just your salary.
That's right.
It's other benefits that come with working for the town, right? Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a great thing, uh, to put out there.
I think that's where a lot of the confusion has gone, too, from not receiving, and that's not you the first time. I mean, I don't think you got it the previous.
The last one was Seth.
Okay, so.
Plus this accrual thing you'll see on your A stop, right?
Yeah.
So employees aren't gonna have to go to Mona or whoever and say, well, how much vacation time have I got left? They're gonna see those hours on their check every week, or every two weeks.
Well, I'm gonna give an instance for me, it's, you know, and this is, I put in my time sheets, okay? And, you know, it goes to payroll, Mona or Monica would be doing payroll. In the end, it's the manager that signs off, but I've had to come over and say, like, hey, I was away these three days, and I only got one day taken off. So we also, if we're gonna put these policies in together, we're gonna have to make sure someone, it's not just the person entering, because there's mistakes that can be happening, okay? But someone that's supposed to be looking over it has to make sure that it's done correctly, because one may not know what hours are truly, you know, if it was a bit, if the person didn't take a vacation time, or did take vacation but was not put to it.
Well, the managers really need to be looking at the time sheets. We have, in the summertime, up to eighty employees.
Right.
So, and we need to get it done by two o'clock for the bank. So, I mean, it's, we need to really work on it. So the managers really should be making it clear on the time sheets what the hours are, and not leave it up to.
Instead of just throwing the sheets out, the sheets.
Most of them do.
Make sure they add up correctly.
Right, yes, making sure, counting the hours, making sure it's correct, so Monica, I don't have to go ask somebody.
And after the payroll is run, or before the payroll is run, somebody else needs to review that, because there are errors that can be made. We have about thirteen different time sheets, styles of time sheets. We have, like you said, about eighty employees, and, um, most, um, full-time employees are paid bi-weekly, but we also have a weekly payroll, so there's a payroll every week.
But our policy states that we pay bi-weekly, and this July one, we were supposed to move to bi-weekly. I think the only two groups is the rec and, and the highway department, and we're supposed to move them by July one to a bi-weekly, so you don't have a payroll. The whole idea of payroll bi-weekly is that you're not doing payroll also every week. Administrational costs, and, that you can do other things on that week that is off.
Not a real detriment to the employee population.
You know, so our policy does state that we should be getting paid, everyone should be getting paid bi-weekly. I understand now, the rec department, Emily, is, most of your workers are only like, what, another week or two?
Uh, this is, they'll get paid on Monday, and it's, the pool will get paid through Labor Day if that.
And that, I, I may be mistaken, but I, I thought, I, I, I remember going through and making sure to look at the policy to see if bi-weekly was prescribed in there, and didn't see it called out, so, I could be wrong there.
The town is on a bi-weekly, we should stick to bi-weekly.
Consistent, whatever you do.
To get it consistent, cause the whole.
Unless there's some rule that says you can't.
So I think we cleared a lot up, looking to the employees.
I think, could we get like the fault, cause we got, we all got a communication from Michael in the beginning of July, of, I guess, basically what that spreadsheet showed and what our time was. And I'm just worried, the next person that comes in will say, you know, that's in our personnel files or whatever, you know, like, oh, well, this is what you're supposed to be going, like, it will just perpetuate the issue. Can we just get a new, clarify communication? I want it in writing.
I love it. Just, it should be fixed on the, the payroll stuff, then, wouldn't it be?
Well, no, she got a, they got a letter, and it was based off of, they could only carry forty hours over.
It was an individual letter, okay, okay, okay.
Yes, it's an out individual letters to restart.
Because everybody's was different.
Was different, yeah, sure, okay.
And that didn't take into account when you just brought it up?
January first.
January first. And so you're the same that January to January.
Mm-hmm.
And then prorated to July, but you were only given X.
Yeah, okay.
And then we get into, there are contracts out there when people were hired on, okay? That they said, I'm coming from X to here, and I want to, you know? So there are contracts that say certain people, but I know that's confusing to, to, to you, that you're not told, that this is, and I'm looking at Mona, that there are certain people in town hall coming over that.
Can I ask who those, who those people are?
Who, who, who is, who is what?
Who has contracts.
Who has contracts?
Yeah.
And Michael has a contract, Abby doesn't have a, that's, that's not a contract, she doesn't have a contract, she had an employee agreement, Michael has an employee agreement.
Uh-huh. Who else has an employee agreement?
Uh, so.
I have an offer letter.
So there's, yeah, offer letters.
Offer letters.
So people, when they applied here, said, I'll accept the job, but under these circumstances.
Actually, everybody should have an offer letter, which just clearly states what you were to receive.
Which we started, which we started.
I would say the administration on that's really difficult, but this is public, you know, have all this, right? So, so hopefully that'll give you some peace of mind.
Just easier to find it if it's in your personnel file versus which meeting was that, do we need to go back through?
I think we need.
I didn't put anybody in, I didn't put anything in anybody's personnel files.
I, I think what, what Abby is coming from and some of the others, and it goes back, how you're gonna do this January to January, and then January to July. There was a sheet that was put out to each individual.
Finding a specific process.
And it said X amount of days, but they felt in that letter that it wasn't the January to January plus to July. And so they got a sheet of paper that is gonna say something differently.
Yep.
Than what we're talking about now.
Okay.
And they would like an update of that to say, Emily with one twenty, that she's not, I think in that letter, you probably lost some hours.
Yeah, I wasn't able to roll over a week. Like, I would have, I rolled over a week from December to January, and then.
Uh, yes.
Like.
Yeah, so we need to.
I'm just gonna do it, yeah, so, uh, cause obviously it will be. I, I think we just would need some time on that to, to be able to put pen and paper on it, but hopefully everyone understands that it's okay as of today, and we'll get you something specific in writing that says what to expect over the course of this year related to the approach to vacation.
It might be a good idea, with you having the experience, you do, if there's questions that come up, or.
I never mind answering questions, yeah, absolutely, of course, yeah.
Is there anybody from the town on Zoom that's looking for questions? No. Authorization of signatures and contracts from the town managers to others. So you sent out an email today, I believe. Look pretty sure, I know the one big one, that was the Sam.
Yep.
And Mary Ellen and Abby, I think.
Yep.
So, yeah, so I'm, I'm now an administrator on, and we're gonna add Mary Ellen and Monica as well. After the primary, we'll get that set up. We'll update the banking information, and we will update our registration so that we don't run up against the October deadline.
Okay, and then there's the bank signatures?
Yeah, so after this week, I'll be reaching out to, well, probably after the primary, I'll reach out to community and have new signature cards. For now, it'll just be me and Monica.
On the max.
Right.
Okay. And Abby, are you for both FEMA and on the Killington Forward?
Mm-hmm, um, so for FEMA, it's a grants portal, everything runs through there that I've been signing. Um, then when it gets through to the state, there are the financial reports that come through to actually process the payment and get it to us, so needing a new signature person for those. For, like, the Killington Forward stuff, you know, there's state permits all the time that someone's going to need access to Agency of Natural Resources Board to be able to go in and sign off on those.
Is this strictly Michael right now?
He's str, yeah.
I think in the email I sent today, I just gave a very brief description of different approvals that are, the different author, different authorizations that'll have to be switched over.
Yeah, I was traveling all day, I didn't see.
No, it's okay, I don't, I.
What, when will we be able to get those done? I received an email while I was driving back from Boston, from Stephanie David Saladino, Killington I, NDS, NOI signature, attaches a blank signature page for the stormwater permit amendment. The HBS asked that this be signed by the town, and so.
Just have to point, just have to point, an authorizer.
Okay, so you're not an authorizer on this at this time?
I can't, yeah, I can sign anything before I leave.
You know, it says the app, if the applicant is a business, yeah, is a business, the signature must be provided by one of the following, the person listed as the registered agent with the Secretary of State, an executive figure such as the President, Chairperson, or Superintendent. So I can just sign this document, or are there other documents that we can?
Uh, I think it's the SRF loans.
Are you, are you specifically on those loans? Are you the only one that can sign for those loans?
As far as I understand, yes.
Okay, so you're leaving on Friday, and you're, it's mu, it's Tuesday already. When are we gonna start working with these folks that?
I, I can't work with anybody, it's the board who authorizes it, so you, you guys have to decide. Usually it would go to a deputy town manager, or, or an interim town manager to take over that authorizing role.
I don't know what's happening from a continuity perspective.
The board has to, the board just has to decide who's gonna be the authorizer.
So anything for SRF loans, you're the only one that's a signature on there now, and you're the only one that can, and it's funds for the town. So wouldn't that fall back when we don't have a town manager for the next week or so, to making that person the treasurer?
I don't know, I don't know what entails, if it's just signing, it's one thing, if it's, I don't know a lot about the SRF process.
I'm just used to when someone decides to move on, that things are set up.
Yeah, I think it does. I've seen a lot of different things happen. Yeah, so there's no, yeah, I, I'm at a loss here, cause I, I don't, I don't know what continuity looks like in an environment like this, so if there's not a person to point at and say, hey, I'm gonna give you all this, it can't go to us, right? It has to be someone that would be taking over in the town.
You can, I mean, you can, you can consult with the town attorney, and, you know, cause a lot of times if the, if the, if there is no town manager, then the select board takes over the role of the town manager until no one is found. Um, but, but that might not be enough for SRF, you know, they have their own rules.
Yeah, 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 got it, yeah, okay. Yeah, which I'm just not familiar with.
Yeah, and you, like I said, usually there's a, you know, there's an interim or in place, or, or the board will authorize, you know.
Yep.
Someone to be.
Someone to be that person for the, until the interim or what have you, okay. Is that executive session thing, is that, like, what do you, how do you, how do you talk through?
I just thought that we started this when we received the resignation, that it would be a smooth handoff, and you're gonna be working on such things as SRF and finding out from them, since you are the only one that has authorization at this point. Can you tackle that this before Thursday's over of, you know, who else can do these things? Or do you wanna leave it that I'll, as the chair, contact the town attorney and go from there?
I, I'm, I don't mind, but I am, I am fairly confident right now that, because there are actually forms that I have to fill out, and then the select board has to, um, to, uh, author, so, so what's, what SRF and these other partners do is they send a form, they say, who's your authorized signer, and then the board has to make an official Mona, uh, motion on who that authorized signer is.
Okay, so knowing that today's your last night of board meeting, I guess we'll have another one, maybe, okay? Can you get the form, since you are the only one that can talk or sign to these folks? And can you get that paperwork to the board, so that we can take it from there?
I've actually, I've actually started that, yeah, I reached out to SRF to make sure, I, I let them know there was gonna be a new person, um, so they've sent us there. So they've sent us their.
Do you have a copy of the form of what you signed?
I do.
Okay, so.
But I also have the one from SRF.
Okay.
The new one.
And does it say who can be a signer?
I imagine it's whoever it's authorized, but I can look.
I mean, these are the things that I thought we were working on.
Well, we have, well, we have them, but.
So I guess, these are the things I'd be concerned about as well. So it would be like, is there anything else like this that where we would just be in a pinch without your signature? Is there anything else like this?
USDA?
Yeah.
Where the, so are you reaching out to Sean to get, saying you're leaving on Friday and?
I've started reaching out to, to partners.
Were there borders?
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot.
So.
Okay.
Cause the list that we got today doesn't include all of those there. And I just wanna make sure, Michael, that we have everything for the town. That we're not sitting here in two weeks, half the calling you to ask you to start doing stuff when you're not working.
Well, yeah, probably won't do that, but, I mean, usually what's, what happens here, this is why there's not a smooth transition, because my resignation was, you know, unexpected and then there's no interim in place.
Yeah, there's no, there's no handle.
So there, it will be rocky.
What will be rocky?
Uh, the transition.
It'll go, it'll go from someone to no one, it will be, it'll, it'll be less than optimal.
Yeah.
If you could help us with, though, these very specific things.
I don't mind. And that was the purpose of tonight, too.
That'd be great.
What's the next week look like?
Because ultimately, ultimately.
Can do that journey.
Yeah, what we can do to get to end the job on each one of them, you know what I mean? So it's the reach out and then it's like, okay, what would you need from us?
Yeah.
Yeah, who can be a signer, right? So let's make sure you get through all the questions to them so then we can have all the information. We can, okay, good, this one can go to the select board, this one can actually go to someone on, in the staff, you know, that type of thing.
I'll do my best to consolidate those forms.
Yeah.
Match the information, have it to you before Friday.
Yep.
Chad, we, can we take away the email statement that you made the other day? That you'll be, I'm not taking away that you'll be working here. In that email, you said you'll be working at the Public Safety Building? And you'll be closing out this kind of stuff? And you'll only do what the board as a whole or the majority, I believe, asked you to do?
Yeah.
You have employees that need a manager while you're here. And I think they may be, like, they don't know who to call or how to get. And they may, I don't know, or Rob doesn't know. Emily, is there grants that your department, that just says the town manager signs? I don't know.
Uh, not currently, cause we're all in like committee.
Okay, but are there, are there at times? And we need to, when you go to that next grant or whatever, change it over. And sometimes when you have one person's name in and you don't have that person working for you anymore, it's kinda hard to make these changeovers. It takes, it could take a couple of weeks or months to make the change. So what I would like is that every employee, if you know that you go to just, there's only one signature and it's the town manager, that you need to be able to talk to your staff.
Yeah, shoot me an email, call me.
Okay.
I'll be here.
Go ahead, Laquisha.
I, I recall that I do need something from the board because to go forward with the, um, the change of banks. So where I started working on the golf course and for the credit card, the point-of-sale credit card processor, the authorized signer has to sign. That happens to, well, it, it happens to be presently Chad, which is not, who is not with us. But, so we need to change that and because of Michael's leaving, I would ask the board to make a motion to appoint Monica as the authorized representative. Wouldn't make sense to appoint me. Uh, but Monica, and then when, once we get a new town manager on board, we would appoint that town manager as well, so that there's two people. And I would like her appointed for both that and for the municipay because I will need, we just changed over to Michael, so I will need to change that over. Just so that we don't, we're not in a situation.
So you need a motion from the two of us so we can go right away for municipay?
For municipay and for the golf course credit card processor. I don't, they call themselves first view, but.
I'm gonna make a motion to move the sole signature of the town manager for municipay and for the golf course.
Golf course.
Credit card.
Credit card processor, yeah.
Processing to the current assistant treasurer.
Okay.
That means we don't put a name, we say assistant treasurer. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks. So they have those minutes, I can do it. Thanks.
And you get that? Just quickly, I was able to find it. So this is what SRF sent me last week when I told them that we would need to change an authorization form. This is primarily what they look like, so the select board just says who the authorized would be and then a motion is made and this is filed.
I believe you have one in your packets.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, was this whichever ones we have to take action on, right?
Yeah.
So if there's a list of them.
And then, and then in your mind's gotta be prepared who's the, who would be the person.
Yeah, and if we're allowed to, those are the things.
Sure.
So we're allowed, we're allowed to pick anyone? Not that we would just pick anyone, but I mean, if, if something should be the board.
I imagine, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, in the beginning with SRF, I know when you were with Bebsy, Abby, I think, I think Steve Finer was signing things for both SRF applications. And to Bebsy, we had to have certain signatures going from there. But we'll get through that. What I'm mainly concerned of is like, we got through the SAM, there was only one person on it. We just got through.
That other thing.
The municipay and the golf course, that was a single whatever. Are there any other single signatures that we have out there?
Grants.org?
The, the grants is.
Are you on that?
Yeah, I have, and I think as long as, as long as we have the admin rights to SAM.gov, we're able to work the grants.gov, yeah.
So if you folks can go through and if there is anything else, then we go from there. Okay? Is that it? So I think that's it. Is there anything to add to that, Michael?
No, sir.
So we're going into executive session, 24 VSA 3131B, Labor Relations Agreement with Employees. And Abby is your other public works, Michael is the town manager. Robert and I, if we can go into the other rooms.
Oh, sure.
Go into executive session for that.
To transfer.
Coming out of executive session, number 815. Um, we were told to go in by our council for labor relations agreement with employees because of a union being formed and there's a contract that's supposed to be negotiated. We're gonna take, we had a discussion and tell that to Rob.
Yeah, okay, so we would like to move the responsibility of the labor relation agreement from the town manager to the director of public works.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now next, so I was told we have to go in separately on these things. Disagreement action against an employee and it's the same for people going in.
Oh, okay.
All right? Right, executive session is 832, underneath 24 VSA 3134, disagreement action against an employee. We are allowing Abby, who is in charge of the union negotiations and as public works, to issue the disagreement action against the employee. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If anyone wants to know who the employee is, it goes into the personnel file. So this is just like any other place where we don't put all that, okay? So next up is public input. Are we muted or?
No, we're unmuted.
Michael, there's some people that are trying to get on, they're unable to.
It looks like we're muted because there's a microphone on from line.
Patrick, can you hear us?
I'm looking at Killington Town and there's a line through the mic.
Yeah, but I've got it unmuted on here, which is usually good enough.
Kevin, can you hear us?
Anybody out there in the world?
Holly, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I've let everybody in the room, so that's a question.
So we're underneath.
What was it?
Patrick, you have your hand raised?
Yes, I have a question, but my phone just dropped, so I'm not sure if we're in the correct section now.
Go ahead.
Um, oh, I saw a posting for this meeting that the, was it Pike Industries? Was that covered last time, the change order, or was that this time?
We're gonna, remember I put number 10? I changed it to other business and we're gonna move into that underneath other business, so.
Okay, my question really is not level eight.
Okay, so we're at nine at public input. Go ahead, Ken.
So what is the path moving forward for the next town manager? Interim.
Reached out to VLCT Ted Brady about a week ago. Gave two people's names. Both of them have called back over, um, the weekend. One of them is, has worked out of St. Albans, I shared it with Laquisha that you named. We've run them through and one of them is with, was down in Springfield. Tom is interested and he's away until the 22nd. And then, well, he's gonna make a trip here and we'll have a conversation with them. But from that point, once you have an interim, then it's putting out for this time around, we will go through VLCT. And I think it could be anywhere from six months up to eight months or whatever, too. You know, they tell you three to six months, but I think six to eight months is going to be a little bit more reasonable to do. The lady from St. Albans really didn't want to, um, drive every day.
It's a hike.
But, um, Tom did say he would do it. You know, um, once we meet with him on the 22nd, he'll put out his bio. This is one of those things where. Whatever, it's, the board is the one that picks the town manager. But this time around, we will, I, I believe, we will, um, put this out and vet it through with VLCT. And when we go for the, um, full-time town manager, and we will invite some public comments. And I know that superintendents, about two, two superintendents ago, they actually had something where, you know, people can meet the candidate or whatever. If we have two candidates, we can meet both candidates.
Interesting, yeah.
So, um, we'll, we'll go from there. But right now, we have a conversation with Tom coming in to town of Killington, if there's an interim. And a call back into Ted Brady, um, tomorrow to see if he has any other on his list of, he said these two would be really good. So that's what VLCT does and, you know, I mean, we had Mel Adams at one time doing FEMA. And then I know he would go around and doing interim, he's no longer doing that or whatever. So, um, Tom was with St. Albans for almost a decade or whatever, I think. Springfield, I'm sorry, Springfield.
But he was also the, he did do the interim town manager at Woodstock for a bit.
Right.
He was also at Tetford.
At Tetford. So he, so he does this, so we'll, you know, we'll have him, you know, he said he'd give a call. I think tomorrow he's camping somewhere with not great cell phone service. So he said when he gets the cell phone service, he'll contact and then I'll set something up with the other.
Will there be a committing form for the new town manager?
We're gonna go to the VLCT and then VLCT is going to direct us. And they have a process of how they do this. And if that's their suggestion, then that's their suggestion and we'll go from there. They also do the putting out and advertise and kinda help you with the search, Ken, from VLCT. So, any other public input?
Fire department.
Yeah.
Okay, where do we stand with staffing? And it's my understanding that there are several applications that are still pending approval.
I'll have to leave that to the town manager.
Molly?
I'll have to leave that to the town manager.
So Michael's gonna be leaving. I heard at one point that this was the authority and the responsibility of the fire chief.
What's the responsibility, yeah? The same thing with the police chief? You work with, when you do your hiring, you work with the town manager?
Yes, yep.
The same thing with the fire chief, so, so you wanna fill in like if there's, you know, the interviews and where they're at or?
Yeah, if they're hiring for a leadership position, I'll sit in, like I sat in on the captain, uh, interviews. But, you know, for.
Without naming names?
No.
Yeah.
And then, um, for the firefighters, I just let, I just let Chief Bowman handle it. And then for volunteers, I've advised Chief Bowman to form some type of committee or, or work with his other volunteers to, to go through those applications and just make sure that it's a good fit for the team.
So how does individuals and positions need to be fully certified, correct?
Uh, there are requirements, I believe state statute requires all firefighters to have minimum qualifications.
And we're checking in on those.
Or requiring it within a certain amount of time. Actually, Chief Bowman's super informed on all that stuff, so it's been nice having him. It's good guidance when, when we're bringing to my onboard what they have to have.
So I think we've hired some people on in police and fire that may not be fully, but you, you have one officer now working, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, she's fully trained, she's going through her FTO program, she's not on her own yet. But she'll, when she's on her own, we'll bring her in to meet the town and the board and stuff.
But she still has to pass some.
She's passed all her academy trainings, it's called FTO field training, where you ride around with a certified field training officer for, you know, get exposed to as many different things as you can. You need to sign off and the final packet goes in front of the training council.
And I believe when Paul Ginther, when he was starting the process, Michael, to do some hiring on or whatever, that, you know, there are some people that may not have the class two, um, level, but they need to go to it to get it and go from there. But that's up between the fire chief, like you had said, for the firefighters. So, um, we'll go from there. Once again, we'll sit out of that. There you are.
Interview.
There you are. Ken, Ken had a question, Lonzer, about where are we at with the interviews for firefighters?
I just actually hired one, uh, got two more to have signed and then they'll be, should be hopefully on within the next two weeks.
Okay, you went through a process of interviewing, how many did you interview?
We interviewed, I had 18 applicants, interviewed 12 of them and, uh.
Wow, a lot of firefighters out there looking for work.
They don't wanna be cops, they wanna be firefighters.
That's for sure.
Well, what we do, I mean.
The more, the more crews it can wash for us, so.
I think one of the questions was is, you know, there's this, you have the authority to hire on the firefighters if it's a upper, um, position or whatever, that you do go with town manager? And you said he sat in on it.
Yeah, the captains, so I had to let a captain go, hired another captain. All the captains that I've hired, I've been on from the interviews that those guys did.
Right.
And, uh, this last guy that we just brought on, uh, I got him from the academy and, uh, he is starting actually the 13th tomorrow. And, uh, he's actually, I'll say it, he's more qualified than I am, but he is going after grants and stuff for us. So, I mean, right now, I'm kinda, hands are tied, I've got no, at 32. I've got no, at 32, uh, people on the roster, and I've got no more gear. So, we're gonna go after grants for gear, uh, gear washing. So it helps us out in the long run for workers' comp and all kinds of things, radios.
Yeah, great approach.
So then when you're doing, when you're hiring on, say, a firefighter that may not meet all the criteria or whatever, are you giving them a certain amount of time to get it?
Uh, it depends. So, full-time, I'm set by the legislation that I have to give them, that they've got 12 months to get their fire won. And the other thing is, I'm also requiring my full-timers, at the minimum, be in EMT basic. Because then I'm not having somebody run a call that is a lower, uh, lower level than my officers and such, so they can do the paperwork also. On the volunteer side, I'm gonna bring in whoever I can on. Because I can use, as long as they work out for me, I can use them for anything. Driving truck, driving engines, pumping. There's exterior operations that we can do with them. Interior, I am making, I have it, it is mandatory that you do level one.
We're just sticking to the, how many are you hiring on in this?
This, I'm hiring three.
Three, that was approved in the vote this July?
Yes.
July 1?
Yes.
Was approved.
Yes.
And whoever you're hiring, they either have firefighter one or within 12 months, they need to get it.
Yes, sir.
And we left that up to you, to, or the, we, we booked the manager, then you left that up to you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, no, that the meeting we had when we awarded the contract to Russell Construction Services?
That's underneath other business.
Okay, that's fine.
There was, like, all this, so many different things.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Underneath other business. So, um, is there any public questions in the Zoom world? Not seeing anymore. Seeing double Patrick Cushing. On the computer. Other business, Abby, can you bring forward the Pike and go through?
Yeah, so, um, I had talked to Pike about adding pavement, basically from the ski bridge to Roundabout Road. Originally, the idea was we could do a three-quarter inch shim over the base that's already there because we had anticipated we were going to install two more culverts next year. And once those were installed, then we would patch pavement, do the rest of the, um, top layer of pavement there. So we're not gonna go forward with those two culverts anymore. So I reached out to Pike and said, let's do the full two-inch instead of just the three-quarter inch, and then that section will be done. So it would be an additional 733 tons of pavement for to do that, and an increase of just under 63,000. I also reached out to them, um, because getting line striping done with our current person is challenging because he's got other jobs lined up. So I just reached out to Pike and said, what if, what if you just do the, the line striping, get it done out of the way? So it, for the yellow lines, it would be about 9,000. And if we want the white lines as well, which I don't, I don't see white lines above that area. I don't think that we've had them. That would be another nine. So, um, if we don't want the white lines, I would just.
So the extra tonnage is based off of, and in the contract?
Based off their bid. It's just an additional tonnage.
And when we put this all out for bid.
When I put this out to bid, I did say that, you know, we may adjust.
But there's only two paving companies in our area.
Only two that, um.
That bid, right?
That bid on it. There was a third that I reached out to, stated.
And the per ton charge, Pike is lower than, uh.
Pike is slower.
Lower than the other person that bid, so.
Well, you're right, because Pike actually included their mobilization within their price per tonnage.
So you need a motion to approve the amendment?
Additional, yeah, the additional pavement and at least the yellow line.
And this does fall underneath the FEMA?
I'm sorry?
This does fall underneath the bill to FEMA?
It falls under FEMA.
Where we should be getting 80% back of that there and getting it done. And we can get this done, when will they be paving?
When will they be paving? They're starting re- reclaiming tomorrow, so, um, and they said it would take about five days to do the whole thing, so.
Including this? Okay.
Again, a motion to approve the addition?
Yep, my motion to approve the addition.
Now, in favor?
This is what my question was on.
Do I have a question first?
Um, what, yeah, I was questioning, I, I heard the, there was the reason behind the, the yellow and the white lines. But the town has the machines. What would be the price difference of paying our guy to do it and doing the materials versus having them do it?
So.
Because that's, I mean, that's a significant difference.
So the, the, the yellow lines is about the same for who we have doing it for us? The same as the white? The issue that, the reason why we went with lot lines was because, um, we could never get L and D here at all. We were putting it in, and they would show up the week before World Cup, and the lines would be gone before World Cup or right after. And we don't, we don't have the machine. We bought a machine. Lot Lines has the machine. This was approved over two years ago. He's done two different, um, sets of lines already, two seasons of lines or whatever. So the, um, the amount of money that was expended would have been spent to L and D. I believe Abby is now just saying because these roads were not going to be done, it's pretty much the same cost if we brought in Corey to do. Does that answer your question, Patrick?
So, so you're saying that the, the bidded price of that extra 17,000 would be the same as if we brought in a guy which we paid for the machine for?
Correct, because we're already past, so now we would have to start paying for it. So he bills out, and we're past. So if we bring him in here, he may be $15,000, let's say, okay? But when are we gonna get him? Because Corey's already been here, we see all the lines done.
Okay, I misunderstood then, because I, I thought we, as a town, owned the machine.
Once again, once again, no.
And materials.
We, we, no, we don't own the machine. We get billed for the hours of doing it, just like if L and D came in and did it.
Okay.
Any other questions on that, Patrick? Hearing none?
I'm sorry, no, no.
Okay, so we're moving forward with approving the extra tonnage of the paving, and then just the yellow line. No white lines.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Abby?
I have two more items. I have a letter of intent that, um, I need the boards approval on, um, to, to, um, appoint, like, a duly authorized representative. It is for, um, so we have what's called the municipal general roads permit. And as part of that, in 2020, there was a road erosion, a road erosion inventory that was developed that the Regional Planning Commission did. We have to update that, um, by October 31st, 2027. And the state has funds, and they're offering towns in order to update their road erosion inventory. We have been doing work around town, um, but no one had been updating the inventory online, the inventory maps online. So we're, we're behind on that, four years behind on that. So, um, this grant would, you know, kill two birds with one stone, you know? We meet the October 31st, 2027 deadline, and we have a new updated road erosion inventory.
If Chris was here, he'd say, it sounds like Public Works. Don't you think it would sound like Public Works to, to do that?
Okay.
Are you willing to take it on?
Yeah, so it's a 10, $10,328 is what they're looking at that Killington is eligible for. They would give us 8,256. We would have a 20% match that we would just have to budget in the next fiscal year towards that.
So next year's budget? I'll make a motion, so moved, to allow Abby to be that person to move forward.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Can this be one of those things, too, that you put down in your paperwork that when you come to Public Works for their budget coming up the next year?
That we need to have that.
Remind us that it's a 10,000 with a 20% match?
Yep. Similar to that, we had last spring put in a letter of intent for a grant to do some of the work, and we've been awarded that. So I have a grant agreement. The total amount awarded, awarded is 15,000. Our match is 3,750. It's either cash or in time. So if our guys do the work, that's the in-time piece. So I just need the board to approve.
Do we know where we're doing this work?
Sorry?
Do we know where this work is gonna be done?
We would have to identify it. So right now, we have, um, this would be a third grant that we have for that kind of work. We have an FY23 one that got delayed because of the flood last year. They gave every, the towns affected extra time. That is going to be on Tanglewood and Rocky Ridge. Then we have an FY24 that we'll probably look at for next summer to do. And then this would be, we could also do this next summer, or we could wait. Actually, I think it does need to be done, spent by September of 2020, yeah, September of 2025.
So this is something that the board did last year to approve for whoever to go forward with this grant, and now it's been approved?
In the spring, and the grant's been approved, so I just need.
Can I get a motion to allow Abby to sign, take an agreement to move forward with what was already?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it. Okay, the, um, other is, we met up, I think it was two weeks ago, on Russell Contracting. Patrick, you have a question again? Your hands up. Not hearing any.
Just forgot to put down.
Okay. Russell Contracting, we had the discussion. Um, I think we left it that, um, you're gonna call counsel and find out how we move forward with it. Can you give us an update?
Uh, I think what I need to know exactly is where, what direction we're moving in. So we, so is this gonna be, there's two parts to it. There's the extra that we need to do. Can I split it up in phase, in phase one and phase two? Was that the intent? So phase one is the, uh, vault and the stairs, and then phase two is everything else? It sounded like we had to do a re-bid for everything else, if I remember the conversation correctly.
I thought we said, contact counsel in saying that we put out to a bid and for, for this, and it's actually higher than what is in the funds. And we asked you to go to counsel to see how we move forward with it. And, um, and counsel should be able to tell you that if we need to. That's what I think we were sitting here saying, like, you know, Lucretia's saying there's a lot of other work that has to get done in the treasurer's office. There's also other work upstairs, and, you know, this, this bid was like 400 and change. And then we said there's probably 200 more, and then on top of it. But we also, I think, Ken was talking to John, and we had approved maybe John doing some PC or figuring it out, Ken?
Estimating services.
Estimating services. So did we go to, have we started the conversation with John?
I need, I need to, no, I need to know what we're asking before I go to anybody for anything, so. What, so what's the question? Are we, are we gonna go?
We'll, 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 we'll come back. I think, I think, I think at the last meeting, it was just like, we'll, we'll contact legal, okay? If, if that's the case, I'll, I'll just contact Kevin Brown and them and see where, where we go for the questions, then, um, you know.
There was initial element. What I remember is it was the money. Can, can we actually go forward without going to vote and things like that?
Yeah, I don't even know.
And then there's a collective element of putting the rest of it into, like, what is it really gonna cost us? And then what would that next step be, right?
Right, because, I mean, we said, when we put it out for a vote two years ago, I think it was two years ago?
Yeah.
It was like $600,000 was gonna do the whole office. Now we're finding out, like, that ain't gonna do it. So I don't know if we could really use any of those funds until we know what the full cost is. And that's why I said at that meeting, we may have to go to a vote in November, so.
Okay, so you're coming up on a deadline to go to that vote, right?
Correct.
So you, you need to figure out, so yes. And, and one of the other things is, as soon as the news was out about Michael, Russell did contact me to find out who the point person is going to be because there are things that have to be done, like getting the permit. And those, and it starts with the drawings. He, he was clear, right, Ken, with the drawings, that they have to be more, they're not construction drawings. So the architect needs to provide construction drawings so that, for the contractor.
So the architect that we hired on, isn't he, can he do structural engineering, stamping?
Uh, he, I don't, no, he's not an engineer, he's just an architect.
He's a residential architect, I believe.
So we had said that we would have to go out and get an architect with a stamp for engineering to approve the plans.
I think that's the only way they get a permit, right, Ken?
Yeah, the documents have.
You need to start.
I, I believe this architect, he is VT licensed to stamp. Okay, but the documents are not complete.
So I, I was thinking, I think he's able to stamp it.
I think he has a VT stamp.
Okay.
Okay, and Chris Temple, naturally, with the wolf, okay?
Yeah, can stamp it.
Stamp it, yeah. His look in good shape, but architecture really need to be completed.
So.
To the, to the point of finishes, there's, there's no finishes selected.
Right.
And details, specs.
We haven't had that conversation with the architect for his stamp on the plans that he provided us for the drawings.
No, are we, so when we go back to, when we go back to, well, I guess it'll be up for you guys to decide, but what? I, I think the, the most important question right now is, what is the scope of the project?
I think the first question is, to the architect, is, do you have a, are you licensed? And you can stamp the plans you gave us? So then we can jumpstart, instead of going to, if he says no, then we're gonna have to go and.
Yeah, but what's on the plans?
Yeah, so we had said at that meeting two weeks ago that for now, it's the clerk's office with the staircase and the vault.
What about her additions, though, that she's requesting?
I just said that the clerk's office is the clerk's office. The way it's designed, the bottom floor of the clerk's office was designed in the architect drawing. Okay? We then said for John Russell to give us a cost estimate on that section because that includes the vault, and also in that drawing, and the staircase. And we already have the west side of the building finished. And for now, I guess we're saying on the east side of the building, we're going to leave it wide open and set up some lighters. So Lucretia was here at that meeting two weeks ago and saying that, you know, you could put the vault in, but I can't run the office. Is that what you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you need a desk, like you have a front desk coming to?
Counter, you need the security, um, yeah, there's a, right.
So is that all? I was not involved in, uh, drawings.
That would be.
But is that in the plans from the architect?
It wasn't the original plans that we.
Who's the original?
The original plans that were sent out to bid, that the guy came back with an estimate, courtesy estimate. It wasn't a bid of 1.5 million.
And then we took it.
And then we, you said just.
But let's find out what the vault would cost.
Right, and the staircase.
Let's find out what the staircase would cost. So now we're gonna take that, and we're gonna put the unfinished stuff from. And John Russell said he would do a cost estimate on it.
Provide you with, yeah, okay, yeah, okay, an estimate, okay, but, okay, in order for him to do. Provide you with, yep, okay, yep, okay, an estimate, okay, but, okay, in order for him to do that, the architect needs to complete the drawing.
He's drawing, right.
Should that be a conversation between John and the architect so that, so the architect is clear on what John wants?
With John and the architect, but with somebody from the town on that conversation as well. So that there's no misunderstanding and, and John doesn't get nailed for this and saying that and the architect knows this.
Right, he said he's-
Fair understanding, you're the owner, you know?
So if you can contact John and the architect tomorrow and just see if you get that conversation going before you leave on Friday and then-
Yeah, let, let John, yeah, lay out what he needs to do, the final estimate, okay, budget estimate for the furniture.
And I think one of the questions to the town attorney was what is the amount before you have to go to a vote? Because you can go up to a certain amount and if those extras or those additional pieces fall underneath that line and you don't need a vote, but if they're gonna go over that, then you'll need a vote.
So Lucretia, when Michael calls up John Russell and the architect, since you know what's needed downstairs, can you sit in on that meeting?
Sure, bring the original.
Any nice granite, okay?
You're the reason of a town hall, so.
Everybody thinks we have doors and doors are ready, trust me.
So if Michael reaches out tomorrow to the architect and to John Russell, try to set up a date in the next couple of days and then include Lucretia for a time or whatever. But we do need to find out what it totally costs or whatever. And then I'll contact Kevin Brown and see where we have to go from for a vote.
Yeah, the financials, yeah.
Just a vote, so. Any other questions now? Hearing none? I thought that was a hand call.
No, that was, that was almost a young-
A motion. 905. All in favor?
Aye.